This meeting has been advertised as a regular business meeting as follows. Posthead written notice on official bulletin boards at Debra School, Upper Elementary School, and CBLM schools. Electronically forwarded written notice to the Brown and Gag Times. Filing written notice with the Florida North County Township. Filing written notice with the members and secretary of his body. Mailing written notice to each person who has requested copies and has prepared any charge fixed. This is in compliance with the Prime Minister Chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Law, Part 1297.
Breen?
Here.
Greenwood?
Here.
Nathan?
Mara?
Here.
Um, any exec done?
I have.
Any exec or any personnel there now?
I was wondering if exec is like, no, he's.
Okay, that's an executive person.
Well, typically in exec, that's where you guys ask your personal questions.
No exec needed, um, any communications to the board?
Um, I've already, this is.
Uh, alright, uh, number six, public comment on agenda items. Yeah, so. Hi, everyone, so CJ Dennis, Northside over. So, uh, as you know, the New Jersey School Board Association is going to be doing a presentation on the superintendent search, so first I'd like to make public comment that, um, a successful superintendent search will land back on Ms. Helen Payne because she's clearly the most qualified person for, for this job. Um, as per the Board of Ethics Code NJSA eighteen eight twelve twenty four, one line eight, they will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recognition of the chief administration officer, which in fact is Helen Payne. For the community, I'd like to just, uh, point to you guys, um, there's a comment left on Northside of a community page by Chesterfield resident, um, by the name of Ms. Kim Hodgson, she gave us some great advice, so she said, "It's understandable, this is very frustrating for people who just want more information from Board of Education, and you can absolutely ask the board to provide that. You should ask the board to do presentations on the board's goals, which would give the community more insight on what might be driving their decisions, as well as issues that are most important to you guys." So, I think that's a good idea. I put out a call to action to the community, guys, let you guys know that they really, if they want that, it's a good idea to reach out to you. Um, that's it, thanks. Anyone else?
My comment was about communications. I'm Heather Dreamis, the woman who sent an email to all the board on, uh, January twenty third, and I still haven't received a response, okay, one. Is anyone able to respond to my email tonight? It was what I brought up in the last one?
I can just tell you that I never received an email from you.
Oh, you did not?
I did not.
You didn't receive it directly from her, it was sent to me in a forwarded email.
Okay, but it's not hers.
No, I thought I originally sent it to everyone, just a copy.
Okay, she said.
Oh, yeah, maybe, but I also forwarded it to you.
Yeah, I got, I got yours, but I, I just want her to know, the reason I didn't, well, one of the reasons I didn't reply to you is because I never gotten a direct email from you.
Yeah, but, oof, on the twenty third.
Okay. Just to make it known, sorry.
And you know me, if I could tell me when you responded to my.
To your email?
To my email, which was based on my question, uh, last, at the last meeting.
Or the, or the question I wrote?
And that last meeting I asked, uh, talked about the policy that was revoked in March of twenty twenty four, uh, fifty seven, fifty six transgender students. And I had asked everyone, why was it removed, that it wouldn't be a big answer. In my email, I asked again, why did everyone remove it, and then my other question, you know, one of them voted to remove it, and then my other question had been, is this information included in another policy? There's a lot of policies in New York, so it could just be some of them, but I did not say it.
I know, uh, it's always recommended by attorney not to respond to emails, so that's, I didn't respond.
Now I'm asking it as a question, as in the last meeting, someone, because it was important to remove it, um, I don't know why, and, but maybe it's just a different, but I still have not an answer.
I know that we discussed it, I mean, it was a year ago, um, I don't know exactly what, what was discussed, I know the general consensus was the board didn't like the language in the policy, so we felt it was best to get rid of it.
Are you redoing a new one?
No, we're not allowed to do a new one.
You're not allowed to do one?
No, that comes right from the state, you cannot put your own policy in place.
So you either, oh, so this was the state's policy that had been accepted in twenty twenty one and then removed in twenty twenty four?
It was from the policy company it came down from. And the state, and the state has said, if you don't use that policy, it's fine if you don't use a policy, but you can't create your own policy, currently, that's, that's what it says.
And then, what is it out there to protect that student?
That's not something I'm going to do. We'll move on, is there anybody else that you have public comments? I'm checking out. We're done, uh, we're gonna move on to your presentation.
I didn't know that you had another one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Mary, I'm Breeden, I'm a senior field service rep in the New Jersey School Board, and based on speech, please, with a name, um, and, um, we've been, and this is Justin Wright. So, you had been talking with Lori Bandlow, Dr. Lori Bandlow, I think in December, around December times, and Lori was going to be the field service rep for Burlington and OSHA, and then we had another field service rep who retired, there's a bunch of us that are retiring late, I'm not going to do it, because my husband wants to keep him in the manner we should become accustomed to it. But, um, when we hired Justin, he lives in Burlington County, and Lori did not, so it was decided that Justin would be Burlington and part of OSHA County, so he's transitioning in, so he's here with me tonight, and depending on what happens, we'll be working with you alongside each other through this process if he decides to go with us. Um, each board member has the, um, the promotional materials that we have for our superintendent search, but when we know that there's, there might be public here, we like to use a PowerPoint so that the public can see what we're talking about, and you all have the paperwork in front of you. So we were asked to come in and talk to you about our superintendent search proceeds, processes, and, um, are you okay if I turn that a little bit more towards the, the community? A little bit.
Maybe you can also push it back so.
Just a little bit. Okay, can you guys see it as well?
How's that, um?
Too far?
Yeah.
Thank you. So our super, we have four different superintendent search processes that we talk about, um, but successful superintendent searches, we restart with a proven process and driven, and objectively driven criteria. And so the superintendent, the board hires one person, and that's the superintendent, and then the superintendent hires all the other district staff, and hiring a superintendent is one of the most important decisions that you'll make over the next three to five years because the contract can't be less than three years, and it can't be more than five years. Okay, so that's really important, and you will be bound to that person for however long the contract is. It really is a confidential process because you will likely have people, candidates from neighboring districts, some probably from Burlington County who may apply for the position, and you literally, once you know the names of the candidates, will hold those people's livelihoods in your hand. So confidentiality is really a vital part of this process, and we stress that throughout. So there are some legal requirements for a permanent superintendent, they must hold a super, a school administrative certificate, or a CE, a certificate of eligibility. There is a residency law in New Jersey that came into effect during the Christie administration, and that says that anybody who works for a school district, if they don't live within New Jersey, must move within New Jersey, into New Jersey, within a year of their starting date. Um, if people were grandfathered in prior to that, if people lived in, um, Pennsylvania or New York prior to that, or even some in Delaware for the southern part of the state, they had, they were grandfathered in, as long as, if there is somebody that's applying for the position and it's your selected finalist, as long as they don't have a seven, more than the seven day gap in between the current district that they're working in and coming into this district, they would still hold that waiver and be grandfathered in. Again, you need to offer a three to five year contract, it can be a three, four, or five year contract, all contracts need to end on July first, and then you need to receive contract approval by the executive county superintendent. Every county in the state has an executive county superintendent, or an ECS, and they have to approve the, um, contract that the board agrees to with the finalist prior to public appointment, okay? And then compensation is subject to comparability requirements, and I can get you the information on Burlington County and the superintendent salaries in Burlington County. So then there's the role of the staff and the community. We do recommend that all applicant names that you use are kept confidential to all but the board, inclu, which includes the board, and then the hiring of the superintendent really is the, under the authority of the board, they are the only ones who have the authority to appoint the next superintendent. It should be an inclusive process, I'm sorry, my graphic kind of squished there, um, that considers the needs of the district stakeholders as well, and only the board is bound to confidentiality by the code of ethics, so only the board can sit in on, any non-conflicted board members can sit in on that, on this entire process. But then how do board members get the community involved, the staff involved, and their stakeholder groups involved? We have input surveys and input sessions that we can provide, and that helps the board to know what kind of qualities you would like to see the next superintendent have, what you think are the, um, the accomplishments of the district, what you think are the critical , um, issues facing you in the next three to five years, and then if you could ask one question, what would you like those questions to be? So we have online surveys for that, and we also have inter, in, in, in-person input sessions, it's not easy to say, that we can provide. So selecting the next superintendent, if the, the board decided to go with NJSBA, they would meet with Justin and myself in executive session to identify board criteria, and that would frame the advertisement, and then we would also develop the search calendar. The ad and the calendar are emailed to all non-conflicted board members after that meeting for a final approval, and then the electronic ad is placed on the district website and on our website for approximately a month. We get over eight thousand hits to our, um, NJSBA superintendent search page per month, so over eight thousand people are looking at that every month, and then the search calendar is, is placed on the district website for transparency as well. This is what a sample calendar would look like, and I know you can't really see that, but it will, it will be posted on the, on the website, and what it talks about is when we would have those meetings, input sessions with the staff and the community members, when we would have the report on that, all of that input that we received from you, and from the survey, go to the board, because all of that is anonymous, and it does get handed over to the board, and we do that when we deliver the weighted pool, which is the pool of candidates to the board, so we would decide when that was going to happen, and then that triggers pretty much everything else. So we would look for first what the tr, what the date is that you would need the new superintendent in here, this is a six to nine month process, so we are not, would not likely be able to have somebody here by July first. So if July first is when this current superintendent would be leaving, you most likely need to hire an interim superintendent, and I can send you information on that too. All that would be discussed during that, particularly that they can develop these in executive sessions. So we advertise the search through our website and social media accounts, it also goes to NJASBO, which is the Association of School Business Officials, it goes to NJASA, which is the Association of School Administrators, that's pretty much the superintendent and assistant superintendent website and organization, and through NJPSA, which is the Principal and Supervisors Association, and to their websites. We email the ad also to our database, which has over a thousand people that have applied for a search in the past, and we email it out to them as well. It also goes to colleges, nearby colleges, universities, and county offices, we send out marketing e-blasts, and there's also national advertising through the National Association of Superintendent Searchers, which is through the national, the national association of, um.
School Board.
So the applications that would be received, we would develop objective criteria, there's no subjectivity in there, so when Justin and I would go through all the applications, we would look for that objective criteria, anybody, anything that's required, if the person doesn't have it, any one of the things that might be required, they would be a C candidate, which would mean that you couldn't bring them in for interviews. Anybody who meets your criteria would be a B candidate, and anybody above that criteria would be an A candidate. But part of the application materials are the application itself, which is several pages long, a letter of interest, their cover letter, and resume, copies of any certificates that they have through New Jersey Department of Education, transcripts from their colleges and universities, any references that they have, and their last performance evaluation, and the confidentiality, again, of all that application information, applicant information, is really vital in protecting the integrity of the search. Then there are essay questions that the board can select from, these are some of them, they, we ask them to specifically describe their administrative and educational leadership and experience in several of those areas, usually three to four areas, and we have literally an A to Z list of topics that the board would be able to select from, and again, we're looking for actual accomplishments rather than theoretical proposals. Then, the board input, the, um, stakeholder input, and the qualifications in the ad, all go towards the selection criteria. So you, when we deliver the pool of candidates to the board, we would go through the candidates with you, we would also deliver all of the input that would be received from your community, your staff, and your parents, and administrators, and that would be shared with the board as well, and that will help the board, and will guide the board in selecting who they bring in for interviews, and what questions they want to ask, and ultimately, and who they select for their finalists. So once we start getting the applications in, we start reviewing those, and we would do A exceeds your criteria, B is meets, and C does not meet, the board reviews the entire applicant pool, you would have access to all of these applications online, and be able to select who you'd like to bring in for interviews, and you can consider, as I said, any A and B rankings. The interview process usually is three, one to three rounds, these are all confidential, information can't be released to the public on these, the first round is usually around nine applicants that come, that the board selects, it's a brief interview, it's usually , I like forty-five minutes with fifteen minutes in between, and it gives you the opportunity to, um, get to know the candidate a little bit and see if you'd like to know more about them. Every applicant is asked the same questions that the board would select from a sampling of questions that I would provide to you, and then you would want to see, ask the question, is this person a good fit for our district, and do we want to learn more about them? Usually the second round is about two weeks later, and the board will bring back usually four to five candidates, that's going to be sixty to nineteen minute interviews, because you're going to get more into the individual candidates in terms of asking them questions. It's detailed, it's less structured, and there are some questions that all they have as a principle, all the candidates will receive, but then there will be very specific questions that you might want to ask, and then you'll ask the question, is this person a finalist, or is this, is anyone in this second round a person that we want to hire? The third round is really, if needed, we always schedule that ahead of time, that might be two or three candidates where the board is really feeling that they're equal on every level, and they just want to bring them in for either a final presentation or a scenario that they give to the board, to, they present to the board, and then one finalist would be sent forward after that for reference checking. A lot of times, boards don't want to do more than a second round, I always feel like you're establishing a three to five year contract on somebody that you sat down with for an hour and forty-five minutes, so I really do like for the board to have that third round, because it gives you more time with people, and it gives you the opportunity to ask more individualized questions. So once that, once you have your finalist, and have selected your finalist, you would go through, um, we would let the finalist know that they were the finalist, and ask them to talk to their references, and let them know that the board would be contacting them, and ask for additional references. I always like for each non-conflicted board member to be able to talk to three references on their own, so that they would actually speak to three different references. So that doesn't mean that they have to have, you know, fifteen, twenty references for a board, but the candidate, the references would need to know ahead of time, that they would probably be contacted by more than one person, so that's all confidential. Then, once they've notified all of their references and given me the additional list, I'll let the board president know that, or whoever is, is running the search, and, um, give them a script, we have a script for the reference check-in. Then you start contacting the candidates, that usually takes a week or so to do that, then once the references come back and everything is good, and every, can, every board member has contacted a few references on their own from that list, then you go into contract negotiations. We always suggest that the board use a board attorney to go through the negotiation process on their behalf, and that the finalist uses NJASA, or NJPSA, one of those two organizations who have attorneys there as well, they know what can go in the contract and what can't, so the contract usually is agreed upon tentatively by both parties a little bit faster than if the board was doing it with the candidates themselves. Once that contract has been tentatively approved by both parties, it goes to the executive county superintendent, we would ask them to push it to the top of the, the list, they usually would like to have it for about a month, so depending on when the calendar brings it to the executive county superintendent, they may be seeing lots of other school districts yearly, um, administrate contracts that they have to approve, and oftentimes budgets that they have to approve. So if it's before or after that, it's likely going to get looked at even faster, okay? Then once you have the executive county, um, superintendent's approval, you can set an appointment date at a board meeting, and that's when that important announcement goes out, and you invite your stakeholder groups in to meet the new superintendent, that's the first time that the can, the finalist name can be addressed from the board to the, the community members, okay? And then in all of our processes, we provide a transition workshop, so usually within forty-six weeks, we ask that the board and the new superintendent meet along with us, and we clarify expectations and identify, and develop district goals and board goals for the upcoming year, so it sets the superintendent up nicely for that first year. So for staff and community, how could they participate through those in-person survey, uh, those in-person intake sessions, I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm blocking on that, in-person in, input sessions, and then we have an online survey that we would provide to you as well that would be posted on the website, we usually keep that up for about a month as well, and then we close that down, if everything is all put together nicely, it's all anonymous, so nobody knows who responded, and then all of that is shared with the board so that you can use that information. Okay, so I just want to talk to you a little bit about the different processes that we have, so if you go to page five in your packet, you'll see that there are four different processes that we have, the first is a board assisted search, and that's a four thousand dollar search, and you can see the points that are included, we, we, we set the criteria with the board, we develop the ad, we do post that, we provide a weekly defensive search process, we then gather all the information from the applicants, we put them in an A and C list for you, and we deliver that pool of candidates to the board, and then after that, everything would fall to the board in terms of, you deciding how you're going to review those applications, who you're going to pick, and you would need somebody from the board to schedule those interviews, and all of that. Um, we can provide you with sample questions, and you can select from those, but we can't format those questions for you without, you know, very nice, you know, they would be the sample questions. The seven thousand dollar program is everything that we talked about, but then it includes that input from community staff for in, in-person input sessions, and also the online survey. We have confidential secretarial services, and then we would come in and deliver the pool of candidates to you, that would be an executive session, then you have about ten to fourteen days to review all the applications, anybody who's non-conflicted will have access to those online applications, it's a secure and confidential website that we have for that, and you get to go in and take note with everybody, and then let us know who's within that ten to fourteen day period, who you'd like to bring in for interviews, and then we would schedule those interviews. We would, and we select questions also, and then we would format those questions for you, so that you have, uh, questions that you could ask, and you have room to take notes on those questions, and, um, a script before and after the interviews. We come in before for a half hour, to give you everything you need, to get you set up nicely, and then we come in at the end of the first round to process you out, is there anybody from the first round who wants to move to a second round? We do the same thing for the second round, where you've selected those people, we give you sample questions, you'll select those, and then we'll format all of those questions for them into you the first night of the second round of interviews, there's usually three nights for the first round, I really like them to be consecutive, if we can't all do that, because it's easier for the board to stay focused and, and, you know, know who they're seeing, and all of that, um, and then the second round will be two nights, so we would come in, again, usually about six o'clock, get you all started, go out, ask, answer any questions that you may have, and then we come in at the end of the second round to process you out, see if you want to move anybody to a third round, or if you feel you found your candidate, okay? And then we start talking, and all the reference checking and things like that. Whether people stay in their application, you'll sometimes see on that first page, you can contact my preferences at any time, no, references are contacted, so there's a finalist, and so you notify that finalist, they've got a chance to contact their references, because again, if they are super, seen as superintendents, they may not know, their board may not know that they're looking, and that could really cause a detriment to their employment there, and, and one person's going to get the job, not, you know, the twenty-five or thirty people who apply, so you have to be very careful with that. And then once they've notified me that all of those references have been contacted, then you will accept for a, for a reference checking with that script. Okay, the twelve thousand five hundred dollar program is everything that's there, in addition, we would be sitting in on those interviews with the board, okay? And then the five, the fifteen thousand dollar program would get you a strategic plan at the end, so once your new superintendent has started, we would step, schedule a, a strategic planning process that brings in your, your stakeholder groups, and gives you a plan for the next three to five years that sets you up and the superintendent nicely for their success. Okay, all of the, all of the advertising there is done electronically, I haven't had anybody use in paper, and as you know, a lot of paper publications are going, are, are done this month anyway, so there, you can use your NJschooljobs.com account to post the, the position as well, it will be up on your website, it'll be on our website, and then if you look at pages six and seven, you'll see all the other places, I'm sorry, seven and eight, you'll see. you'll see all the other places that we send you. So we send to all the colleges and universities around, in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and also Delaware. Sometimes you might have some Delaware folks that might be applying, probably more Pennsylvania if there was anybody outside of the state. And then we also send it to all the county superintendents so they have it and to all the state associations, school board associations so they have it as well. So every search by nature of, of being electronic and the internet is really a national search. Okay? That's pretty much it for the, for the presentation. I don't know if you have any questions? If we do, with the staff and community input sessions, the questions that we would ask for you all are what are the strengths and accomplishments of North Hanover district and community? What critical issues will the district face in the next three to five years? Again, that's because the contract can't be less than three years and can't be more than five. What background training and experience would you like the new superintendent to have? What leadership style and professional characteristics are important in the next superintendent? And then if you could ask one question of the candidates, what would it be? Okay? And we always put those in with our sample questions to the board. So, and we italicize those. That, that font is italicized for questions that have come from either the input sessions or the surveys. So, and the board always chooses several of those questions as well. Can you all ask the questions?
Is this guaranteed to happen?
It depends on what level. If, if the board goes with New Jersey school boards.
I'm saying, okay, so if, if you choose your organization, is this guaranteed to happen?
As long as it's not the four thousand dollar search, yes. But if, if they wanted to go with the board assisted search, where we pretty much stop at the pool delivery. If they wanted to do the community staff input, they could do that for another thousand dollars. That would be outside of the, the search itself. Does the board have any questions?
What's the most possible?
The, well, it depends. If you have, if you haven't got a strategic plan in a while and you want to be able to do one, then fifteen thousand would be. If not, then usually the seven thousand dollar. That gives you a break deal of help and support from us, from the superintendent myself, but we're not sitting there during the interviews. So sometimes boards want us to be sitting there at the interviews because it makes it a little bit easier for them. We go out and get the candidates and they're with us and then we also scout them out so the board doesn't have to leave them alone. Yes?
I have a number of questions.
Sure.
They're kind of dropping from place to place.
Okay. I'll do my best.
Okay. Going back to how long does this entire process take if we should go with you?
It usually takes six to nine months.
Okay. You said earlier that we would probably, well, we would actually have to have an interim, interim person. Could that interim person be a candidate for the final position?
They're usually not because the interns, uh, superintendents who are on our list are retired superintendents. So they're not looking for a permanent position. They're looking for a position to help the district and the board through that six to nine month process if it's seating. So you would, you might be looking for somebody. It, it would depend on when, when the board decided. We would talk about that all when I came, when Justin and I come in, they just select us again. I'm not assuming anything. So we would talk about when that seating would be. Typically, we get the most applications for July first seating because it's the best time, it's the best break for somebody to leave their school district and start in a new one. And then the next time we get the most is for January first seating. So January first would be a possibility unless you wanted to start in July.
Okay.
It would be up to the board.
Under your suggestions, you would appoint the interim superintendent?
No, I would provide you with an interim superintendent list and sample questions that you could ask. We don't really get involved in interim lists.
But if we chose, say, for instance, to take someone from our staff and make them an interim superintendent, could we do that?
They would be an active superintendent then.
Okay, so there's different ways we can go about that.
They have to have the certifications and everything else that they would need to be a permanent superintendent. And they would have to be approved by the executive county superintendent as well.
Okay, if we decide to go with one of your plans, are we bound to only use that plan or can we go outside of your plan and do other interviewing type processes on our own?
If you were, if you decided to go with us and you decided to detour from that plan and we, so let me, let me tell you this story. So years ago, we had a district that we were doing the superintendent search with and they were using our process. And then right before the second round of interviews, a few candidates sent the board applications. The deadline had already passed and we explained to the board that in our process, they wouldn't be able to interview those folks because the deadline had passed and our process was already in place. So they said, well, what if we wanted to interview those folks? I said, we would need to close out the search and then you would be able to do whatever you wanted to with those candidates. And so they did decide to close out the search. And my guess is that there was probably, there were probably a couple of people that board members knew and thought it would be nice if they could interview them, but they hadn't done the cert, they hadn't gone through our process to make through the application. So in that way, they needed to close out the search and then we were finished. We sent letters to all of the applicants and let them know that the search had been closed by the board and the board was handling the search on their own.
Okay, so basically, in order to go outside of the parameters of the search that you are conducting, we would have to close that search if we wanted to do something on our own?
Right.
I know that's more complicated than that, but basically that's a very.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, next question. This one's easy. If an applicant, applicant sends in all their information and inadvertently does not give you one of the pieces of information that's required, would they get a second chance to send that in?
Absolutely. So one of the things that happens is I'm looking at the applications as they come in and Justin will be also. And if we see that something, that the certifications are not there, sometimes candidates will put in a tracking number. We can't, that, that tracking number doesn't help us at all. If we click the tracking number, we get an error message. So I always, and it could be a super, a seated superintendent. And as a seated superintendent, I can be relatively certain that they have their CE, their certificate of eligibility or their standard cert. But part of what you're, they'll be hiring us for is to confirm that they have that. So I would then send them, oh, any of that and let them know that they need to either put that into the application if it's before the deadline, they can just add it right there. If not, if the deadline has passed, then because we do get a lot of people who apply on the last day and I gave up all of them reviewed and, and seen them that last day. So then I would tell them that they need to send that certification to me so that I have proof of the certification. Same thing with transcripts. We make sure that their transcripts are there. If they're not, I ask them to send them to me. And we also make sure that anybody who has a doctorate is from accredited college or university. So that's part of what you're, you're hiring us for is to ensure. And then when I deliver, if I was delivering the pool, I might say the certifications for these people are not in the application itself, but I have proof of them. I have confirmed that they actually have the transcripts, went to an accredited school and have their certifications.
Okay, my concern was I don't want to lose a good candidate because of some silly piece of bull.
I don't want you to either, and that's why I will always send that email. And I will also add that if somebody is from out of state and they're not working in-state, New Jersey does not have reciprocity for anything. Nothing. And so I will let them know that they have to apply for this process and it can take some time. While the board could interview candidates who are actively pursuing their certification, you would not be able to, if they didn't have the certification in can, when on the day that you were going to appoint them, you would not be able to appoint them. I also let them know if they're not from New Jersey. I sell them the New Jersey residency law and let them know sometimes, you know, I, in one of my superintendent searches that I'm doing now, there's somebody from, from Florida. So I said, well, I'm sure you realize you would not be able to commute from Miami to New Jersey every day for this job. You would need to be able to move into New Jersey within the year of your appointment. And I sent them the residency clause and they responded and they said, laugh out loud, yes, I'm planning on moving to New Jersey if I get a position in New Jersey. So I never want the board to miss out on a candidate just because something's missing. So I will always make sure that that information is there.
Okay, two more questions.
Okay.
During your presentation, you talked about board members meeting one-on-one with applica, applicants. Did I understand that correctly?
No, 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 no. You will be able to review electronically all of the application materials, but board members will not be meeting individually with candidates.
Okay, so I did misunderstand.
I think, I think you mentioned calling references to.
Right, and calling, calling references. Once you have your finalists and they have given us all of their references, you would have a script and then I would give that usually to the board president and Ryan would take a look at that list and ask, you know, assign three references to each one of them.
Okay, I really didn't think I had that right, but okay, thank you.
That's okay.
And my last question is, do you make recommendations as to who we should hire?
I can't.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know your community like you do.
Right, I understand that.
You're the only ones who do that and you are the only entity that is authorized to appoint the next superintendent.
You just give us all the information you gather.
I mean, I give you all the information and I'm going to rank them in A B C. A, well, A or, A people for me are usually people who are seated superintendents or assistant superintendents. And then B is everybody else that meets your criteria. So anything that was required, those B people will that match. If it's preferred, they don't have to meet it. Okay? And we'll talk about that if, if you decide to go with us and we commit and talk about the criteria and the credentials. We'll talk about and stress anything that's required is required of every single candidate to have where they're on the C-list.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. If you could let me know either way, okay? We're your, Justin and I right now are yours, your service reps for, you know, the upcoming future. So whether you use us or not, we're still going to be here for you and we can help you in any way that we can. Okay? Thank you so much for your attention. Thank you guys also.
Thank you.
Is the community able to ask questions now about your presentation?
Do you want the community to be able to ask questions?
I'll give you like five, let's do like five minutes.
Okay.
So, um, community would like to know what the formal definition of a conflicted board member is?
A conflicted board member is a board member who has a family member or relative working in the district.
Full-time or part-time?
It doesn't really matter. If they have a family member that's working in the district, then they would be conflicted.
So they won't be able to look at any other resumes?
Right, if they're conflicted, they can't be a part of any part of the process, including, that's okay. I almost thought that was me.
Nor vote? Nor vote?
They wouldn't be able to vote on the search consultant who Kate, who was hired for the process either or anything with the super, with any of the candidates or go through the process or to appoint the new superintendent. And then once they're appointed, if they're truly conflicted, they won't be able to participate in any matters that revolve, that involve the superintendent's personnel matters.
So it means they can't even sit in and read anything or do any of that? Okay. What happens if there's no good candidates? There are certain things that our school district has that our superintendent now sees only one, some, some which in the entire country knows how to do. So in order to have a candidate that is somewhat knowledgeable at least in those certain things that Helen is, that Helen is very knowledgeable on, what if there is no candidates that have any of those qualifications?
So we'll try and structure the ad, should, again, should they decide to go with us, we'll try and structure the ad and include a lot of that information and hopefully have some people who have some information on that. If they're, if that's a requirement, which it may be very diff, your pointing out may be very difficult to find somebody with that information or that history and that knowledge. If it's preferred, then the board can look through those candidates and go through the process. If they feel that they don't have any viable candidates from that particular application process, then they can close out the search and they can go out again. And it doesn't cost them anything additional for that. Okay? Did you have a question?
I have a question to ask.
Yes, hypothetical. What if the interim superintendent that is hired came from another district or another state but they have all the certifications needed in order to become that? Would they be allowed? I mean, they're, and they have all the qualifications and everything to come to it. They're going to be a temporary superintendent. Can they go for the full-time job?
They could, but as I said, most of the interim superintendents that work in New Jersey are retired superintendents. They don't want to be full-time superintendents any longer. So they want to be able to come in and work with the district for a certain period of time and then be able to turn it over to the new superintendent.
So that'll never happen?
I, I, I'll never say never. I'll never say never. And I do know that there was a board not too long ago who had a candidate who, um, when they put the word out that they were looking for an interim superintendent, sent in their resume and, and things like that. And again, we weren't part of that because we don't really get involved in the interim search. And that person even said to that board, that particular board, I'm looking for a permanent position. So you could hire me as an interim and then see how it goes and then if you'd like me, just put me in the position. That didn't happen, but neither ha, I mean, they weren't hired as the interim either, so. But I will never say never.
I will never say can't.
Yes.
Um, in front of your presentation, I think you suggested that there's a portion of this that can be, um, where the, the, are we the stakeholders?
You are stakeholders, yes.
Okay. Have input?
Yes.
Okay. If they choose. We have not been allowed to have any input.
Well, with three of our processes, you would automatically get input.
Would it make a difference?
Uh, it has never not made a difference in my, so I've been doing this for fifteen years, okay? And I've never had a board not select questions and not take into account what their community and their staff are looking for. They use that as additional criteria to bring in candidates and then to, for those questions and they use it to help select their finalist.
So if we determine that, we don't seem to think that, we won't know anything about any of the candidates.
Exactly.
So how can we have any input on whether or not we should inform a school board to do the job that this woman could do it for five years very well?
So because you're going to answer those questions and you're going to tell us what you're looking for in the next superintendent in terms of experiences and also characteristics and, and professional characteristics. So you'll be able to tell us what you feel this person needs to have and that will all get passed along to the board.
It'll get passed on to the board, but so the, so basically the board has the final decision on what qualifications that they, that the candidates must have in order to go on to step two. So basically, so I think in, in Lehman's term it is, even if we answer their questions, it doesn't mean they need to take it into consideration, basically.
Do they absolutely need to take it into consideration? No. But I've never had a board that has not taken it into consideration.
That was the first.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right, you're very welcome.
Brian, very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Brian, thank you for letting that happen. Did you, Brian, Brian didn't have to let that happen. Okay. So, thank you, Brian.
All right, let's move on, personnel. Make the motion to approve the following personnel actions based on recognition of superintendent. Eight point one. Eight point nine.
Mrs. Morrow? Eight point nine. Thank you. Yes. Mr. Green, Larry?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Number nine, instructional. Motion to approve the following instructional items based on recognition of superintendent. Nine point one, nine point two. Second.
Mr. Green, Larry?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Uh, number ten, financial. Motion to approve the following, following financial items based on recognition of superintendent. Ten point one, ten point ten. Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Green, Larry?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Number eleven, travel. Motion to approve the following travel items based on recognition of superintendent.
Okay.
Second.
Mrs. Marl? Yes. Mr. Green Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Uh, number twelve, transportation, motion to approve the following other business items based on recommendations superintendent. Eight point one. Second.
Mr. Green Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Marl?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Uh, number thirteen, other business, motion to approve the following other business items based on recommendations superintendent. Thirteen point one, under thirteen point six. Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Marl?
Yes.
Mr. Green Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Number fourteen, seven point one.
I have, uh, a couple of items. Um, we had our world cultures night the other night, it was well attended. I think we've been in tours very festive. And it went well, I think that's our third one that we've had. Our play went off well, um, was, uh, lots of good feedback and reviews from the play. And Endeavor held their cupid shuffle, right, Mr. Green Leonard?
Yes, we did.
That was that last week or the week?
Last week.
Yeah.
For grades on one to four.
Things one to four, which is, which is a large group, that, by the way, it's very large gathering. Uh, but that went off well as well. Um, I, I do wanna brief you just a little bit on funding, um, because it's, uh, an unusual situation. Um, Amy and I did attend the new staff briefing in Washington last week and the federal relations outreach event. For NAFIS, um, we shared our advocacy plan with the members we met with and we talked about FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six funding. And, and I wanna break that down a little bit because there could be some implications for the current conditions that we're experiencing. So right now, the federal government, I think I mentioned that the last meeting is operating under a continuing resolution, which means there is no budget. And so therefore, Congress has temporarily authorized the federal government to continue running um, for a defined period of time at a defined funding level. Right now, the continuing resolution is set to expire on March fourteenth. Um, right now, unless something happened today that I didn't see, there is no FY twenty-five budget yet. Um, and, uh, right now, the Department of Ed is only authorized to pay Impact Aid out at fifty percent. So once March fourteenth comes and there's no budget before that, um, Congress is going to need to do one of three things. They're going to need to either approve a, a new budget for FY twenty-five. And then if they do that, that would be great. Um, and whatever Impact Aid is funded at in that new budget is what we would get paid out at. Um, or if they can't do that, they will approve another continuing resolution for another defined period of time. It could be a week, it could be a month, or it could be through the end of FY twenty-five, which is the end of September thirtieth. Um, if they do that, that means that there will likely be no increases at all to Impact Aid. It's essentially, it's at best usually flat funding. Um, in some cases, it's less than that, which is why you approved the reduction force for Starbase tonight. Um, the third option is the, if there is no CR and there is no budget, the federal government would, would shut down, in which case no money would flow for Impact Aid or anything else until that situation was resolved. Um, currently, at least as of last week when we were in DC, the, the feeling was that they would go the route of an additional CR. Um, the offices that we spoke to were hopeful that that would go through the whole budget year through September thirtieth. Um, and then they would just start working on the FY twenty-six budget. So let's say that's correct and that is what Congress does. Um, Impact Aid would likely be held flat at the FY twenty-four level. That doesn't mean that our funding would be flat because there are numerous factors that go into determining what our Impact Aid payment is every year. So the Department of Ed ran different scenarios and, um, looked at, well, if this happens, what would it look like? If this happens, what would it look like? Manipulating the different factors in the funding formula. So considering all of those factors and considering the districts across the country that get Impact Aid, right now, under a CR scenario, they're predicting that, uh, Impact Aid would be paid out at ninety-four percent. Which we typically get a hundred percent in North Hanover because of our concentration. So that's about a six percent loss, which doesn't sound too bad until you realize that our, our, um, amount of Impact Aid is about fifteen million dollars. So it is a pretty significant chunk of money. Um, so I just wanna make everybody aware of that, that we just need to keep our eye on it. As we all know, we don't budget a hundred percent of our money and that's the reason we don't budget a hundred percent of our money. Um, so we're okay, I'm not going to raise any alarms, uh, just that we need to pay attention is all. Um, so we are able to weather it if it's flat funding, um, and because we have the reserve that we have, we should be okay. But it is something to watch because if Impact Aid shrinks and costs go up, you know, the gap between those two things gets smaller and smaller. Um, so just something to keep an eye on. So now let me shift to FY twenty-six because this is the time we would normally be advocating for that. Um, we have requested sixty-five million dollars increase. I'm really glad NAFIS took that position because if it looks like there'll be zero in FY twenty-five, it's good to have an aggressive ask for FY twenty-six and hopefully we could make up some ground there. Uh, but I really don't have anything to report on that yet because the offices don't really wanna talk about FY twenty-six because there's no FY twenty-five budget. Um, so that's a little bit of information about what's going on in the Impact Aid world, um, here at home. We had a, a great day of professional learning last Friday. Uh, the district is bringing on a new teacher evaluation system called the Danielson model. Uh, we previewed, there's a couple of models that are approved by the state in New Jersey. We previously used a different one called McCrall. Um, McCrall's not being supported anymore by the vendor. So we, we had to make a change, so we're involved with Danielson and that's what most districts in the state use. In terms of our own budget development process, we have begun that internally. Um, we've met with all of the principals and directors except special education. Um, that's going to be one to watch because we are experiencing large increases annually in special education costs. So when we meet with Mrs. Velasic, we'll talk more about that and what she's looking, what she's predicting for next year. Um, but outside of special education, our principals have prepared new staffing projections, their field trip assemblies, professional development budgets and requests for other building needs at this point in the process. So those have, we met with each one, they talked about what they need and why they need it. And then Amy is merging all of that into one whole budget. Um, principals and, and directors also. They budget for the maintenance of our existing programs or if we're bringing in a new program, that's typically Mrs. Guinan's office that budgets for that. So they take care of books, workbooks, furniture, subscriptions, all of those things that are just recurring costs um, and recurring purchases. And then every teacher is allocated automatically, mostly three hundred and fifty dollars. There's a couple of people who get slightly less because they serve a small number of kids, um, that they don't submit any justification for. They just spend that on desk items, paper clips, staples, sticky notes, whatever they need to buy for their classroom. Um, but I wanna be clear because there seemed to be a little confusion about this, um, different people that I've spoken with. If any teacher needs anything beyond that, all they have to do is put it on a piece of paper and give it to their principal during the budget process, right? So even though three hundred and fifty dollars doesn't sound like a lot of money, they can ask for whatever they need. And they do. Um, and the principals each have a process in place for that and verify that with them because there seemed to be some confusion about that. Um, so, but the time they have to submit it though is at budget time so that it gets into the budget, which I know is hard because it's so far before September when I'm going to need it. But that's just the way the budget cycle works and that's what we have to do. Um, so I, I would think by the March meeting, right, we'll be talking more specifics.
Well, the board will adopt a tentative budget.
Tendentive budget, so we'll have that for you. Um, and then the presentation is not done till?
Till our, or, or, uh, whatever, either the end of April or early May.
Yeah.
Or maybe maybe this.
Yeah.
Tomorrow's where I can get it, like.
Yeah.
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 And we adopted, we sent it to the county office, but there was trouble. And then we, once they have, we'll advertise it and have our public hearing. And the board meetings made six to formally adopt the budget.
Made six?
Made six.
It really does.
They give you a window to reconfigure that. And we can change the budget up to remaining.
Public hearing. Um, I think drivers this year, um, personnel as always, that the drivers are mainly, it's most of our budget. Um, but, you know, with Amy and I were talking today, um, transportation costs are up, insurance costs are up. And what was, well, special education costs are, are really up.
It's all insurance, it's liability and health, not just public insurance.
Yeah. Um, so those are, those are also drivers that we don't always see as big drivers in the budget. So just to put that up here right now, but we'll have more specifics and something to look at at the next meeting. Um, and by then we will have that with everyone, taking into account all the different departments. And then beyond that.
We'll also have our STDA number.
Oh, right.
So we don't have our STDA number until the governor does his budget address at the end of February. I mean, we've been told that not to expect an increase in STDA. Um, we did have a significant increase last year of like three million dollars because our enrollment has gone up and our enrollment's on a spike. Um, I just don't know if, we'll just not be on the platform.
And then coming up, um, we have our pre-K nutrition night, that's always a big, big hit. They get to eat things there, taste things. Um, our nurses are involved in that, that's rescheduled, it's rescheduled, that was scheduled for earlier than not original.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, rescheduled for till February nineteenth. We have our someone's special dance at CB Lamb on February twenty-eighth. Our passport club is still running, kindergarten registration, I'd like to announce that. I, pre-K registration, just spread the word on that, February twentieth is when that opens. And then we have family literacy night on March third, yeah, that's all I have.
Question, if we approve a budget and then don't get funded, that money to fund that budget, then what can we do? Do we have to make any budget or just cut programs or?
Both, not the whole.
Funded and not funded by the, the federal, federal?
Whoever funds us, okay? I mean, well, we work in here, we have a barrier of thirty percent. That's the big thing, I know we have a lot of ones in there.
Well, that's a problem for next year's budget. We'll be okay for this year because we already know, well, we know what fifty percent of the allocation for this year is anyway.
Like, what if they don't have the money and they don't give it to us?
I mean, anything could happen, um.
So Impact Aid is current year funded, so the money is currently for twenty-five, we have in our budget for July.
Absolutely, we'll get that out.
Yes, okay, thanks.
It was supposed to do the math.
I know, because the, the federal's budget, none of them see timelines are, so that's always confusing. But, so the fifty percent money we're talking about is really our July.
The money we'll need in July.
Money we need in July.
Worst case scenario is there's, I think, that we're not going there yet.
Worst case scenario is you have, you cut programs, you cut staff or you hit reserve. Uh, or some combination of it above. But, but it's too early to worry about that, honestly, right now, it, there's just too many unknowns at this point. I mean, listen, I worry about it every night, but, um, but you really don't, it, there's no need for alarm at this point. There's no reason we think we won't get some relatively stable numbers. Yeah. That's it.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, in old business or new business? Going to the conversation, other comments?
Yes, I have one about the federal government money that we're going to get.
Or not?
Or not, because the way I see things going now, they'll say, yes, you'll get the money today. And tomorrow they'll say, well, we decided not to give it to you. What if that happens?
Yeah, I think that's kinda what Nancy was asking. Um, so that's where the board has to make decisions about, do they want to fully fund their existing budget with what they have in reserve? Do they want to cut some things or do they wanna do some combination of the two? Really, that's, that's basically what their choices would be.
I could, I just have a question. Um, when will we know if we're using that service that just did the presentation? Are, are they, are, are we gonna know if we use them or not?
Yeah, I think Amy, that's on the grant to go on there, but.
It is something you have to do.
Cause I guess you're interviewing other candidates, I guess you would call them, other consultants?
Consultants.
Consultants, so I guess there's a few different consultants that you would be interviewing?
If the board decides to, that's on that, we'll have to think about and then at the next meeting maybe we'll decide.
Okay, thank you.
Here it comes. Number one, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.